I would like to call the work section meeting to order. This is a work session of the mayor council and notice was given as follows. Notice was filed August eighteen, two thousand point three with a record and new work star ledger. Both official papers of the borough. Notice was posted on the building board, copy is preserved in the clerk's office. Ledger allegiance and honor of silence will be brought to you by Stephanie Jane.
I pledge allegiance to the five and another state of America. Into the republic whose stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi Pearl Park, we need a little Paul.
Mayor?
Yes?
Jane?
Here.
Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Men is on his way. Uh Park?
Yes.
Kara?
Here.
Petrie will be absent from the meeting today it seems. Um Matt Mensch?
Present.
Okay, and Dave Lorenzo? Okay, Councilman Men just walked in, it's five seventy-three.
Sorry, I'm at the party that is great.
I just got here too.
So, I guess on the road call that Councilman Men is present.
Present, yes.
Good. Um adoption of merits, may I motion to that?
Oh no, no one actually needs any today.
Oh yeah, I'm so sorry, that was a regular, my gosh, yeah.
So we have.
The regulars.
Yes.
We have the, we have the.
We have the second minutes to um to be approved.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have consent agenda item, um so far all we have listed is claims and the bills list is um a fact or brackets.
There is also backup for each one of the bills in clerk's office, I think on your desk.
Yes.
Anybody wants to take a look if they have any questions on any of them, we can go in and take a look at them.
All the bills?
Yes.
Who has it?
I do, I'm in my office.
Good.
And I think my company has, yeah, he has the copies as well.
Yeah, the bill copies is, they said they collected it from, I mean you could retrieve it out. Oh, excuse me, the, the, actually I can barely see you.
Okay, I go forward you with our copies.
You are.
Is it in the packet on the computer?
Yes.
Have you sent that copy, sorry?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, great, so the, all the invoices and all the applications will be addressed by the borough's clerk's office. Um, any questions about this so far?
No. Okay, so uh I guess we'll.
Uh, still, still reviewing.
Oh, the bills, okay.
Yes, we got it today, so.
Yeah.
What, what did that was, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Should we make darker copies for everyone?
That'll be great, thank you.
Yeah.
I actually have a question. Uh, the September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, um Sean Lee, ten thousand six hundred twenty-one. As a CFO here?
One page number?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're page number nine, Sean Lee, for ten thousand six hundred twenty-one ninety-two. I would, I would like the uh the CFO, uh Maria to pull this out. You said all the documents are over there at the borough's clerk's.
I believe that that individual wanted for the payment of his legal fees, uh the ar- ar- payment for legal fees for his case that went on there.
Great, great, if you could see the copy, that'd be great.
Right, on page nine.
On page nine. I know, it's kinda, kinda very.
Nine twenty-five, Jane, page nine.
Yep.
Nine twenty-five.
I wanna say it's about six or seven now.
Okay.
Um, okay, got it.
No, Sean Lee. We're on the wrong page, nine.
Page eight?
Got it?
Yeah, it says the um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So pull it out, Kara.
Let's get a little one shot, which we, any other ones?
There's also the uh September twenty-fifth North Jersey media group. There seems to be a slew of it.
Yeah, probably, you didn't confirm those roll out.
Yep, pull out.
In there, there are like um one, two, three, four, uh QBE Specialty Insurance.
What page?
The same page nine.
Page nine?
Yeah, it says judgments, four of them.
Can't see.
And then each one is like fifty-four thousand five hundred fifty-seven, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty, six thousand four hundred one, seven thousand seven hundred forty-two.
Oh yeah. Wait, wait, where is that? Can't see, nine?
Page nine, although I have it up.
All of it on top, okay, QBE Specialty Insurance.
Oh, yeah, okay. Those are for uh the judgments and the payment of the legal fees for the lawsuits.
Legal fees and the lawsuits?
They're inside, yeah.
Yeah, they're inside?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, let's, you, the, uh castle, castlewoman, Jane, would you like to pull this out, take a look?
Yeah.
Good, pull out.
Thank you.
Richfield, a lot right below the Richfield Health Department, thirteen thousand one hundred seventy-nine.
As you know, we have shared services.
Shared services, got it. Uh, what is the uh page number eight? What is the New Jersey Advanced Media Ledger? Would that be, I guess, is that advertising for?
Salt Ledger. I sacrificed some of the postman's papers.
Got it, got it.
So it's the.
Got it, thank you.
Corrected in the salt ledger.
Uh Metropolitan Planet Exchange, I believe, were probably buying plans.
For uh nine twenty-five was probably for uh one of the holidays. For uh Labor Day or something.
Yeah, public events, yeah. What is uh page number seven, Patton in Toronto, two thousand eight hundred six dollars, I don't get it.
Reversion from health insurance.
Health insurance, thank you. Okay, so um, everybody okay so far? I mean, there will be an opportunity throughout the week to ask you questions, yes.
I have one question, um there is a water, uh.
What page?
Okay, it was a fire, yeah, fire department.
Page.
Page, Viola Water, New Jersey?
Viola, one would pay us a staff fee.
The Viola, it's. Oh, okay, it's uh page ten for the pool, uh it is two thousand eight hundred sixty.
Yes.
But on page nine, the fire hydrant is a nine thousand nine hundred.
Two separate, so the one on page ten for the pool is the actual work in the pools.
Yeah. You're right.
And number nine, page nine before that is the, we have to pay a usage for the fire, the fire hydrants in the town.
Is this a payment?
Right, but then fire hydrants in the town pays nine thousand nine hundred dollars per month.
Uh, no, I didn't see this.
The pool is two thousand three hundred.
Is your name the pool, is the water in the pool, the other thing is actual fire hydrant.
Yeah. Core or year?
Fire hydrant.
So that's not more, I know, I know.
Oh yeah, it's like sixty thousand dollars.
No comparison, no comparison, so fire hydrant is not more expensive. Okay, I see, thank you.
Just to, um.
And then actually, you'd probably, what was that, four times?
Right. It's almost four times.
That would, yeah, so within uh.
Thank you.
It's probably, it's probably a month until.
It's probably a quarter or once a year, Bill?
Nine?
Yes, quarterly, so you're spending forty thousand dollars, I need to crack.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head, it'll be on that statement, if you want to take a look at it.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Would you like to see it or are you, you're okay with it?
Okay, yeah, just I didn't know that one was more expensive.
Um, could I, could I pull on page seven? September twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, I did, two thousand twenty, twenty-three, police, two thousand eighty, one thousand five hundred ten, two thousand.
Give me your kind of whereabouts.
Okay, it would be the page number seven, bottom.
Bottom.
You'll see that J N service station.
J N service station?
Yep.
That's the exit station.
What would that be? Just purchase from police, this thing is unexpensive.
Yeah. Oh, and the number expensive, so these are gas and repairs.
Well, could I pull this out, would you pull this out, thank you.
Can't send a repair.
We'll pull it out. So uh this mar, right below this mar real, realty?
Yes.
Is for rental of parking lots.
The lot behind the exit station, the rural leases in front of them. If we have a five or six year lease, whatever zone, you know.
Oh, we're renting that one?
We rent that property on it.
Oh, that property would be described as specifically addressed?
Uh, here, Jane, please, this is more, three forty-nine, right there, probably.
Would you, would you also pull up the lease?
Sorry.
Parking lot, very interesting, thank you. Is everybody okay? Everybody okay?
So far.
So far, okay.
Oh yeah, you, you guys should go right inside and go right through, however you want to handle it.
I don't know, it's, we're almost done, I think, I mean, we still have a week to pull it out. And you have all the information there, so. Oh, by the way, did, did you order laptops, Dave?
I didn't order anything, I'm going to go for our son, we're, we're by for state contract.
No, 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 the, the laptops that you wanted to order, how come you're not putting it in?
Because no one told me to.
I thought we talked about it, would you please put it in this, we're going to remote work, they said, please.
Go for our, everybody's okay with me purchasing through the state contract, I've heard it.
That was already on, right?
Was it?
One thousand dollars.
No, that's one laptop.
Right.
Okay, explain all the laptops, I thought the tax, tax office took like two or something, right?
I'll go with the tax office, I need about six laptops to satisfy the needs.
And you still didn't purchase it?
Did not purchase it, absolutely.
Right, and we did have that discussion, try to minimize the cost.
Now, you listened to the agenda, but why, but I said it's all for state contract, so that's all we can do.
You, why is it off the state contract, you don't have to do state contract.
Well, otherwise you don't have to buy from bid.
No, you don't, how much is the cost of the computers?
Cost of computers are anywhere from six hundred to thousand dollars for every state contract.
So why do you have to go to bid?
Because we need to have them within, in Steve, in Steve threshold, having your calls, so it's cheaper.
I think you just need a six right now, how much, how many do you need?
I need six right now, that's.
Six, so how much is, how much is the computer? I remember that you gave me a gold.
Uh, the, uh, the laptop, the bill that was on the August bill, right?
That was roughly about eleven hundred, right, with the, you know.
So sixty-six hundred dollars.
Right, so.
Was it for one?
Sixty-six hundred.
Yeah, that, that was for one.
So you wanted six, so it goes over the threshold?
So, so, you want, you wanna go back?
Oh, of course, of course.
Do they have to be anything done by an IT guy, an GM?
Yes, Kenny's gotta set him up.
So how much does that cost?
I don't know, he's on our payroll.
Kenny uh sets it up for, for our payroll?
It takes a couple days.
No additional charge?
No, no, Kenny is on our payroll, so he gets paid, so he doesn't charge us to set him up.
No, it's only through our Microsoft work.
Yeah, and then Kenny takes care of that too.
Yeah, you got something like that. Microsoft has, I think he had a good, good reputation.
Oh yeah, the Microsoft Office program, right, uh, can, can we buy as a bulk?
I have no idea.
We could share license number with, with the department.
That would be a question for the, for the tech guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to do it individually, yeah.
Yeah, individual laptop, whenever you're purchasing a laptop, the individual costs about like four hundred dollars, right, the, per license, right? But there's a shareable license number per department, that, that's gonna reduce a lot of, you know, uh, cost, so.
So, where do you want me to buy them from?
Um, uh, just to make sure that we just talked about is that we don't wanna, we'd rather ask you to make sure that we get into a corporate account or a borough account, we're gonna save money on individuals. Cause on remote work, we need, I think we're gonna use more of Microsoft.
So.
First, and then if you, yes, you wanted six laptops, correct?
Why should I have requests for, I don't know.
Alright, so, so BA, if you can, you needed six for your own, own administration, correct?
For, that's what the department heads from the borough had requested.
Who, who would that be?
At this point, it's one for the court office, or one, two for my office, which is now fifteen, it's been awesome.
Two offices, two Dave.
Uh, one for the DPW, which is three.
Uh-huh.
I believe the.
That's four, you have four right now.
I have, I already.
So you don't need one, okay, so four needs one, Dave, you need two or one?
Two, oh, that choice, okay, so you're good, so that's two, and then, I don't know how this, if uh Mary needs one, that's three.
Two. Three.
Um. Maria's gonna need one, that's four, Mike has one for him and his girls.
Four. Wait, Maria, Maria's been already, Mike already ordered that, two.
Got, Maria got one?
Yeah, Maria has one, she, I have the other jack.
She's good?
That was last, uh, last jack, it was.
Jack, jack, no, no, that's about four.
So you're seeing four, that means we're on the, on the six thousand, six thousand threshold.
About four. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we, can we look something that's under, uh, you know, cheaper?
Well, we, I, we talked about this, we had a good conversation with the BA, and I, I did recommend that the price for the spec that you even checked it out, Councilman, that we could get it, get it cheaper with the same specs. If we just find a better bargain, so that's what we.
I don't worry about that, I just have to know what the, what the tech guy tells me.
Well, that's why we laid that CC table.
Okay, so, so where do you want me to buy them from?
Buy, buy from, buy from uh where we could get the most better price with the specs.
Who do we usually buy them from?
From the state contract, that's why we're purchasing.
You don't have to do that right now. You don't have to do that.
Okay, so, but Paul, again, where would you like me to buy them from, I can't find them from Amazon, because I have a credit card.
Which, which accounts do we have?
We don't have any.
POs?
We don't have, they won't take POs.
No, we have Amazon, who else?
No, we don't.
You don't?
We don't.
I thought we have Amazon.
No, we have Amazon corporate card, we recently purchased the laptop back.
Yeah, we purchased, yeah.
I don't have, we have.
Who has Amazon corporate card?
Library has Amazon Prime, can you try to add that?
Well, Paul, what we're talking about here right now, I, I'd be surprised for me that we don't have our Amazon, I, I asked Roy a long time ago.
Matter of fact, if you remember, the uh comptroller's office frowned on it.
As an Amazon account?
On any corporate, corporate card, other than.
We wasn't a corporate card, we registered, didn't we register as a, as, as governmental entity?
No.
No? How'd you guys register in the first place?
We never did, we never did.
Now, you guys could be embarrassed by purchase of Amazon, you guys, you guys never purchased Amazon before? So where is this Amazon card from?
I don't know, that's what I mentioned. We're missing.
Yeah, I remember that, Councilman, there it is.
We, on, 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 on August bill, we recently spent about, about, less than twenty, I'm still looking, looking for it, but.
Yeah, there was, I saw it too, I saw it too.
Yeah.
Somebody may have spent their own money, got reversed.
No, but it was an Amazon account that we paid.
As far as I know, we don't have an Amazon account, if we do, I've never saw it, or you.
So, so you know what, what, that's something right now, we could talk about is, let's get back to the phone.
Let's find out.
Okay, so where do you want me to see this?
Where are the places that we could?
We buy it from the state contract, we leave it on the IT guy, who gets the best price possible from the state members, then approved by the state.
Those are usually the most expensive prices.
I don't happen to agree with it, if that's what the state has, then we follow.
I don't disagree, it's obvious.
I don't agree with it, I just don't agree with it, but.
Uh, so, but then we're under the threshold of six thousand, six thousand dollars, you tell me we have no chance.
That's not, the threshold, no, that's not the threshold, the threshold is not a sixty-six hundred dollar number.
Sixty-five.
We, it's not sixty-five hundred either, but we could, we could, we could, it's older than.
What is it? Now, what is that, before the two, two bids or three bids?
Three quotes, three quotes, thirty-five hundred up to thirteen thousand.
I thought it was, what was it, five thousand?
In, in, in any case, that's a CFO question.
I think it's. Yeah, it's a five thousand, I think it's six thousand.
So, the question I have is, we need four laptops to provide these people, where do you like me to buy them from, if you want me to go to Amazon?
We don't have no PO count, that's what the BA is telling us.
Can we ask the state contract, if they could offer us the, you know.
Wait a minute, you guys don't have PO counts for office supplies?
Yes.
You guys have there.
Would you like us to buy them from, from people?
There you go, no, no, like office floor or something like that, sure.
We could buy staples probably more money.
Okay, we could buy from staples.
We could buy some staples, we have any handles.
You think it's more money in staples?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know enough, I think.
Clothes are the best, we don't have any cloth accounts, we have each of us our costume, whatever, because they are the best prices.
No, no, more money, more money. So the more money is, are we talking about a better spec of what we currently?
Similar specs that they required, and then we tracked it out in Amazon, we saved the forty percent.
Uh-huh.
So why don't I do this? Why don't I do this, why don't I just have the IT guy compare specs and see where he can obtain the best price?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Thank you very much, that's good, that's good, thank you, and you need your four, alright? Four, do you need more, just in case?
You could probably get one additional one using.
I, let's go for five, what do you guys say? What do you guys say? Uh, you need to put a res, we don't have to put a resolution, because we have the, we don't have to ask the CFO either, we have enough budget for that? Oh yeah, it's coming from there.
Do we have a purchasing agent? That's Roy?
That's Roy, Roy is a purchasing agent right now.
I see, so we're gonna ask him.
Would you, would, good advice, would you talk to Roy and then confirm, so we can get five?
Obviously, these things will have to go to purchasing agent.
Thank you. Alright, so let's get back to our bills.
Hold, like, one second.
Yes, go ahead.
So, on the August bill, right?
August bill number, oh, you have the August.
Uh, yeah, I have August bill here, the PO number two one three eight seven nine, it's an Amazon corporate credit card.
Two one three eight seven nine.
Yeah, hundred and twenty-five dollars and a seven cents, so this, I, I checked the actual PO and the, um, the order, right? It was for um wireless mouse, I think it was like three or four then, and then the, the laptop back.
Mm-hmm.
But the appropriation for this bill is for municipal, uh municipality building renovation.
I don't know, I, I, who bought it, I, I have no idea.
Oh, for municipal renovation, it says?
Yeah, renovation, I mean, that's the appropriation, it's not here.
Is it number, is that the credit card, the reverse one?
Yes, let's start with CFO, the best CFO is here, will, will you, will you, BA, just send the email and CC towards everybody, contact with CFO, check word is point twenty-five, who, who is third, identification, we can't please. Alright, anything else?
Under.
Okay, good, if everybody else is good?
Okay, I just have received the, a printed copy from BA.
Yes, about what?
Uh, we have a notice from the P O S H, that we did a violation of the, of the SEC. And uh, as far as I am concerned, and as far as I know, we are under the uh process of remediation on it. So, why do we have this again in like this?
So I just received the letter at three o'clock, I'll respond to that any way you would like me, how would you like me to respond? We have fifteen days to respond, they want to know what violation, uh, early, somebody in the police department appears, uh, put in a complaint, with other complaints.
As I said, we are in the process of the.
So.
We'll have to give them an explanation, so we'll defer to the borough attorney.
Yeah, sure. So who should do that, who should answer for this?
The borough attorney.
Or Tony, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be with the borough attorney on that.
BA, what is your, what is your recommendation right now, current situation with the publisher, morning?
The moment just got?
Yes.
Uh, I'll defer to the borough attorney, I think it's a serious matter, they're gonna wanna know what we're gonna do, they wanna know what's been happening, and I think we have to provide them all the documentation, if you read the letter, it says that they want uh copies of all air quality testing and everything else.
Oh, good to me, I'll copy.
Oh yeah, I think everything is in the process, so, you know, we have enough data and, you know, plan and all this presentation, you know?
Good. Yes.
We can just communicate, start communicating with them, and whatever they're requiring, we can, you know, continue to, yeah, that will be no problem.
Yes. Yes, um, okay, good.
And furthermore, uh, it says, receive the health complaint, so who, who complained this?
Yes.
I don't know, it seems to be the, they're talking about the police department, so it seems to be in that direction.
So, and, anyway, and, and, anyone from the police department may have complained?
Could be, may be, who knows?
Actually, we requested the chief of police or his representation, if he could have come today, including captains, because I wanted to discuss certain resolutions that is not, you know, proposed here yet. I'd request, I did request the borough attorney to put my reservations, uh, reservations to you guys, but I guess he wanted me to, because it's the work session, he wanted me, I guess, to talk about it. Um, one of the things that I would like to recommend, a resolution to be, uh, to be prepared, is the resolution to receive the, well, I, actually, that's one of the things I wanted to do, was to receive the raise. So the re, we, we see for qualified roof contractor to finally remove the uh main issue of a burrow, getting a new uh roof, and if we need, uh, like the recommendation from the mold consultant and David Lorenzo, that if we need a specialist engineer to examine the following, you know, in the situ, condition of the roof, we should do it. This is a very important, uh, resolution that I want your full support on it, this create, is the first fix of all the mold issues that we all have, I have no idea why all of us didn't, you know, didn't do this yet, but great, we're all gonna get it done together, that's good, so.
So, so what's the recommendation?
Nothing, well, exactly what it says, receive a qualified, certified roof contractor qualification proposal to remove the old roof, and sell a new roof for the borough building as per the recommendations for the GSE industrial hygienist report.
Okay, so, as you know, we can be applying spec for that.
Sure.
Back in two thousand nineteen, we prepared that, would you like us to re-advertise the same spec?
Um, by chance, could our borough engineer take care of this?
So he did that in two thousand nineteen, but the borough chose, chose not to make the recommendations of it, so it's ready, I could have him review it and then re-advertise it.
Right, I think the data that was provided was a little bit too long, I, I would like to recommend the council members to rebid for, uh, engineer to examine the condition of the roof.
Yes.
And, yeah, I hope you guys think about that, yeah.
Same spec?
When, when, when the specification would be given?
I believe it's same spec. Yeah, that would be.
The specification of the advertisement or?
No, so the specification is, was given in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
To discover anybody, I don't know if you were here at that time, um, and then we received bids, and those bids range anywhere in the area from whatever dollars to whatever dollars, but the borough chose not to replace the roof of that contract. So, that spec is still the same spec.
Okay.
Uh, we have it here somewhere, I gotta go find it, we can, has it after the whole governing body?
My question is, uh, at this time, we will, uh, we'll, we'll illustrate, you can have a specification?
You can have it do it a couple days, and then you guys decide where you wanna advertise, yeah.
Fair enough for everybody?
Yeah, it's fair enough.
Good, good, good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did we decide to have trailers?
Yes, we did.
We did? For, for, for one or many?
No, we said emergency, uh, services, uh, it was called essential services to create the trailers, we all, I think verbally, we, um, I guess we have to go back on record, but my recollection and, and help me out if you guys agree, was that we had a moment where we said, what do you guys wanna do? I, you guys, you guys have to make decision by the BA, are we gonna move and go somewhere else, are we gonna plan to stay here, what do you guys wanna do, and we, it was that part of that moment, and we said that, you know what, we would like to create trailers, and that's why you start providing trailers, including the police. There's some research done about you, from you concerning other trailers as required by, by, by for the ADA compliant, that was, I thought it was a little bit to modify, to save some money, the police was there, what do you guys, do you guys recall that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted, it was a three to three vote.
So how many trailers?
Well, we never authorized anyone to do the trailers.
Oh, yes. Okay, that's a good question, this comes with my other resolutions I wanna present next week, um, Mayor, Mayor Much, you there? Mayor Much?
Mike?
Mike? That's all I forgot there without mute, yes.
It's okay, you bore us, and you're having a nice sandwich in the kitchen. But I would like to present a resolution to approve, uh, to receiving, receive the qual- qualified and certified mold remediation specialist qualification, a proposal to remove all mold from the borough building, this includes main, fire, police, as per the recommendation for the GSE industrial hygiene report, the reason why I wanna present this, the council, I want to answer your question. GSE will come and say, uh, the, the mold remediator will come, hey, you know what, I, I already been talking to GSE, I, I, it seems like that it's, it is standard, it's, it's a distractor for mold remediators to section out areas, so they can let for their, other areas, they feel like it's okay to work, and buy the, buy, buy the report, and I don't wanna get a refu, we'll talk about that later if you want, but right?
Do we get that report?
Yes, we sent it to you.
Today?
No, no. It's Friday, Friday, Friday?
It's Friday.
So please review that.
We can prepare that resolution and then, you know, certainly, you know, we'll, you know, traffic will be circulated ahead of time to make sure that it meets what you're looking to do, and then you
Thank you.
Then the governing body, um you know, at the meeting to act up.
Thank you, um the other resolution I would like to present to you, the council is to, that's why I requested the chief or there's there any representative member, remember?
He answered you, Captain Retondo was supposed to be here, said he was coming, I don't know what happened.
Right, I'm gonna say this again, this is the reason why I want to ask, because I would like to uh, you know, create a resolution for the council members to approve the police department mold office trailer, according to the proposal presented by, I believe it was Chief Espino, uh I thought it was a very this is what I thought, guys, okay, uh we need to move them out ASAP, we got our report, but now we gotta get this going, but um what I wanna ask chief if he was here, and and we'll get another opportunity, was the fact that the trailer was was every single thing that that the police should have. Wait, let me finish, let me finish, please, you could, you can do that, but but I all I was requesting is that, please, chief, just give us the minimal of of what you need, not what you should have, what you we should have, so I wanted to ask him that, hey, what is your minimum requirement? We, you know, communication centers and all that stuff, that's gonna be a hard task, but then, what you can call it, it seems like the communication center is not that bad. We need the G S E, but this is why I wanted to ask him, could you minimize the cost? I strongly feel, um you know, I did my own, you know, investigation and talking to people, cause I'm very adamant about this, and I believe that we could get this done mold remediation between two to six months. Three to six months, gentlemen, if we act fast, so so ladies and gentlemen, so 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 if you can, I would not put the resolution there, uh uh Council Munch.
Oh, I.
Go ahead.
I still have that question.
Yes.
Your plan or our plan is?
I'm so, I'm so sorry, I said that we need to hide the G S E.
Yeah.
Come here and say, hey, you know what, you uh, we're gonna do this and do this and this, so you need this much and this much and this much of uh trailers. And you know, there's many ways you could do it, all I know is that it's more than likely, it's just rather to lock off, to reverse vacuum, they know how to get it done. They said that you can just crack it right across, if it's okay, work here, this is why we need this information, so when G S E, G I, I mean, the mold remediator now we have to choose, right, this is the one resolution that I want to ask, that person will say, hey, I think three or two or four trailers are required. Um so we have the information from Dave, um Espino, we have some information from the uh business manager, we'll put it all together.
So what you're saying, to summarize what this is, uh we have, we have about three or four trailers.
Now, they are. I I I am not the consultant here, the remediator mold, remediator mold will give us the information about, hey, we're gonna do this today, we're gonna do that tomorrow. So I think we should, and then it will, it will go, okay, that means we schedule, we could have this and this and this kind of trailers.
Are they uh doing the uh?
First of all, how does that?
We're gonna use the uh trailer, that's why I'll.
Exactly, they're gonna see the uh report that we all received, um I personally feel about that report, that the old and the new report that we did is somewhat similar, pretty much very, a a little bit different, but almost similar, so I'm very happy that, you know, we can move forward now. Um that will, with that report, and the and the uh and our, you know, our G S E, right? And it was explicit instructions how to remediate the mold like the previous report, and with that direction and the help of the new mold remediator, we could get how many. Now, for the police, I know surgeon, police is a separate entity, it needs to be spec, uh rented in a certain, certain standard in certain places, so let's get this resolution going. Is that okay, uh councillor? He's having a sandwich again.
Yes, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, one last, good, one last resolution is to approve the removal of installation installation of new L E D billboard for the borough, uh please, see, what happened was, my, if my memory serves me correctly, I was a council member. I proposed it on the governing body, we had it in the budget, is under, you know, our threshold, and it was approved because it was such a great deal by Simar. I believe, I remember there's two quotes, you remember that?
No.
Okay, I I sent it to all of you guys, I'm sure you guys have it on record, I can find that.
Yeah, it was last year, so that quote's not good anymore.
Well, I already checked the new quote, you guys have the new quote, it's actually a thousand dollar cheaper.
Good, is it in the budget, I don't believe it's in the budget.
I, well, it's gonna, well, with the price amount, that's what I'm trying to say, I wanna put it on the resolution, I'm gonna, would you, would you ask the CFO, would we have that on the budget? I think this will really brighten up, I don't know about you guys.
What's an approximate cost?
It's, before at two thousand twenty, twenty one asked for it, it was fifty-nine hundred, I think he's asking for forty-nine hundred right now. A thousand, yeah, updated, and it it has, you know, you'll get the proposal, the resolution, we're not deciding now. What it is, it's so easy, let's just say there's some mold remediation happening over here, you can just go there with your phone and just put in yourself, all the information. You don't have to be in this office either, it's just that you gotta be in the wifi area, and you can just update it, and this really, uh we have a problem in Naxos. People are complaining, we don't give enough information on Naxos, we don't get updated, this is bright, new, events, good things. I think it's a good show that we're actually, you know, trying to trying to get things better and looking better for for the borough. Uh that's been, there's a American flag there for too long, let's put something else in there. And last but not least, uh uh couns- councillor Munch, uh remember what we talked about, uh it wasn't you, you weren't there, but Mr. Collins uh your 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 associate, uh agreed to make sure that the contractual report, um we're up to date. Um we've been told that, you know, we satisfied everything, but it seems like, I wanna make sure as a new administration, make sure that we are up to code, there are certain things that I understand. For example, I'm gonna tell everybody here as well, and the council members, there were improper uh vacation days given, right? And the contract was unlawful with the state, right, and we're like, okay, we found out now what we're gonna do. And I thought personally that it's better that it's not going forward, cause you know why? We could send them a letter, I don't know if we did, and we should definitely send them a letter, say that, hey, this is a situation, would you volunteer to reimburse your vacation money? And and then if they say no, the next step is going to court, I believe, and and then when we go to court, I don't know about you, Mayor Munch. I don't see any chance fighting with court, saying that, you know what, we're the one that gave them the wrong contract. They're the, they're they're the defendants, they're the victims, I don't know where this is gonna land, so I think we all decided to make sure, forget about it. But what I've been told is that there's still, uh you know, vacation days being paid, illegal unlawfully, even after we said we're all done with the uh contractual report, so last time, co- Mr. Collins said, she's, he's gonna do a revamp and due diligence, making sure that we're up to date. And I would like, you know, by next week, to get some information that we're in compliance or not, would you do that for us, uh council, council Munch?
We we can certainly, I know we've been working on it, so we can make sure that we're done with it.
Good news, I am done, I'm gonna, anybody else wanna, anybody wanna else wanna add?
Captain Retondo, okay.
No, yeah, yeah, Captain Retondo, thank you, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Great, thank you, um. Council Munch, ca- uh Captain Retondo is here representing uh Chief Espino, would you please come up a little bit?
Sure.
Because uh our.
I was understanding, I was understanding, it was at six o'clock.
That's what I thought too, it's it's kinda like. So it's it's my fault, but I'm glad that you came, and I really appreciate it. Great, thank you, so what I, yes, what I requested too, yes, please do, is the la- the latest the recommendation of the trailers. That's where it is, this one, this one, it has a second floor, it it is a lot of money, it has every single thing, if this was actually a police station it's okay, cause you got everything here, literally, but again, um I wanna emphasize to councils that I would like to request you know, the chief and the captain Retondo, that, see, this is our logic. We're 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 in emergency remediation for the conditions, the borough, especially the police department. We have waited for the report to come through, and now we're ready to move fast, thank you very much, first of all, for preparation of that, this is very detailed, I like it. But my recommendation that I wanna ask you is, how many offices do you have right now, that 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 is functional, that you need right now?
How many, how many offices do we have?
Like, for example, basically, the law.
So we have, we have a men's locker room.
You need a locker room, cause we locked it up a while back.
We actually need two locker rooms.
Two locker rooms.
We need a female locker room, obviously.
Yes.
Uh we have our chief's office.
Chief's office.
We have the records department, which now houses both.
Records.
Both captains in it, which, I mean, obviously captains need their own office, uh because we do I A's, we do.
So there is an investig- investigation I A room?
Uh we have a detective bureau.
Detective room.
We have a report room.
Report room.
We have an interview room.
Interview room.
We have a processing room.
Processing room.
We have an evidence room.
Evidence room.
We have a property room.
Property.
Correct, we have a server.
Server.
Uh you know, I I can go further into it.
This is what I request, and I don't know if the councils would disagree or agree, but I would like, this is, it it has all the bells and whistles. I want to ask you as representative to reduce this at a, as as a minimum than this. Um I wanna hear from you that this is possible, and I mean, there'll be break news, because we we feel, we're not gonna say we guarantee, but it seems like a mold remediation, if we start ASAP, we complete within three to six months.
Okay.
Um this is, the schematics is a lot involved, I know you guys, this is what, uh you know, a real police station should have.
Right.
But if you could minimize it and get back to us.
So, so uh I just to get into that, I know we have had a meeting about this prior, uh we did basically break it down to where it is a a minimum. We really don't have anything more in in this, in these schematics that we have here in the police station now. A lot of these things are are required by the state, uh to have, such as ourselves and things like that, um you know, it 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 really, I mean, we could try to sit down one more time and and say if there's anything else that we can, we can get off of this, um you know, I I we're we're pretty much at the bare minimum as 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 we stand here today.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, please go ahead.
Uh question, uh can you check to see, I mean, the the actual code here is, uh we have a couple of options here for uh build building month.
Right.
We have the one for twelve months, twenty-four months, and sixty months, I'm sure, you know, the longer uh building cycle we have, probably get more cheaper if you, you know, uh do the math, right? Can we, can we ask for uh anything that's six month and the uh, you know, eight month, anywhere uh between that time period for building cycle? For the front?
Sure, I get that.
Thank you.
Um councillor Munch, I would like you to recognize that Michael Beatry, councilman, just uh joined the meeting. At five, five fifty-five, we're around that time, thank you, welcome, councillor Beatry. Um so yeah, that's a good question, I think it's good that we find out the uh the plans, cause we don't wanna stay using it for too long. Um just, I I feel, you know, you guys are the experts, I'm not gonna micromanage anything like that, but yeah, please.
Yeah, so we'll we'll have a conversation, I mean, please.
And uh one more thing, month to month, uh you know, uh building cycle, with the thirty day notice?
Now, is min- is minimums on these contracts, should we give the contract, we give a copy of it, is it minimum, we're gonna need minimum of six months to a year, minimum?
Okay, six months, okay, okay.
For a year.
Please.
Meantime, we 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 have to investigate that we can use the current uh facility, I'm gonna be, and reduce the size of the uh rental unit.
Right, when they look at the mold remediator, um can I get involved in this one?
Right.
Because when you get into any smaller, bigger sized trailers for the police department, it has to be in these kind of uh certified specs. So I I recommend, I recommend that they don't have a, they don't have a toilet, they don't have a locker room, smelling, you know? They're lacking spaces, I think they waited pretty much long enough, I think we should give them what they want, I really, really, for you to consider that, okay? And so I have time to vote. Thank you, anybody else? Um like I said, you you guys are professionals, right? I can't impede and try not to tell you what's what I don't know, but like, for example, the the uh processing room, uh I don't know.
Okay, hold on, so I think, what are you trying to say, directly from all, is take a look at it, see if that's in the mood, get by with, according to the uh ancient guidelines. Right, I mean, the the real question's going to be how long we need to be there, I mean, you know, it's, I I know, I know you're saying, you know, six months. If this happens further than that, you know, then then we run into a problem, where like, it's like, we we had, we had a conversation prior to this, about possibly using another town. Could we possibly use another town for three to six months, and and turn around and not have to have a cell, that's very possible. But there's, like I said, the real question becomes, if it does, if they start breaking things down, and it becomes a bigger problem, now we're, now we're in a tight spot, because now we we said, oh, we're only here for three to six months, now we're a year into it, and that that becomes a problem, that is, that would only, that would be only my thought process in this is that if we're having to use all the towns, then we could probably get away with taking some more things out, but if it becomes a problem where it's longer than that, then we're, we're in a tight spot.
Understood, understood, so so I don't want you to cutting down, there, we can't define the future, this is why I go back to saying, for example, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, probably twenty-one rooms here. Um you have how many rooms here now, I know you need more, you guys figure it out, maybe you could put two functional rooms into one room. Do the best as you can, but I did propose, you weren't here, good news is, uh to to the, to the uh council members, that I wanna propose a resolution to get this thing going before we ask you, this is the question.
I I I, I don't, I don't want you to misunderstand.
Captain, you see no more, you can't do anymore, we're gonna pass this.
Right, I understand.
But it's up to you, or Chief Espino seen this, this is it, it's a bare minimum, okay?
Well, well, that's. I don't want you to misunderstand, it's it's closer to ten rooms, uh you know, not including bathrooms, uh.
Well, there's, there's.
Well, it it, those are, those are the trails themselves.
Well, I don't know.
I still, like you're saying, to put rooms together, we kind of are.
Cause right now, you guys are heroes, we're standing there.
Thank you.
Can I just, can I ask a question about the, you know, they're saying it's six months, okay? Now, you go into mold, you never really know, but my question is, are we aware, like, when they start to break into everything, oh, do we know about the, any asbestos here?
Yes, we would actually.
So what I'm saying is, when they go in, I don't know if anyone's ever been in this situation, but I have many times, and I'm in one right now. So they go in, and now suddenly there's asbestos, and that closes everything down, they have to tent everything, so a lot of times with six months, could actually be twelve.
Sure.
Just because I don't know what's in this building, this is an old building.
And I believe this is a little closer with three months, seven.
I'm assuming the E P.
We have, we have.
Three, six, nine, that'd be good.
I'm saying, to to get, to get into the building, it's closer to probably three months, that's like at a worst.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, so so.
It would be minimum, but yeah.
This is what, yeah, go ahead.
Do we know where these trailers are going? Last I heard, we we talked about Depot Place.
Oh, this is why I wanted.
That's partially why it's two floors, cause the space itself isn't. I think before we decide to do anything, that we have to make a recommendation, where they're going, and wherever that location is that you guys decide. And it be hooked up with electric, water, sewer. So what we had discussed originally, you know, a year plus ago, that that is what we decided on, was Depot Place, cause that would be the simplest. I don't, I haven't heard a commitment to. Yeah, so I don't know who you gotta, how we commit to that, that was the answer for us.
Okay, that's fine, I'm not talking about the, you guys are, I I'm pretty much fine, I think uh the B A made a good point. This is why I requested the B A, and maybe the assistant B A, and even the facility manager here.
Yeah.
To give a verbal report or written report, the progress of the of of the the building, and and you know, concerning the the trailers.
Well, I think we have to find the location, then you could go into, so before we decide.
So until the last time, yeah, I do remember you telling me that a while back, but not that that, you know, that you're doing wrong, but so after that, you're saying, we gotta find the location.
I don't know, we had suggestions of location.
What are your suggestion locations?
Depot Place and the one behind.
Where?
Depot Place, right before shop. Right, right before the train tracks by shop, right?
Okay, so what what's the other other alternative?
The old, the park come out by Bellevue.
Yeah, why can't you, we just use this parking spot over here?
In the park right here?
Yeah, we don't know how much yet, but we're gonna find out soon.
I don't think you have enough room.
Huh?
I don't think you have enough room. So Depot Place gives us, gives us lands to be able to park our police cars and.
That's the whole thing.
They bring a lot of vehicles.
You would have regular parking, and then you would have the workers.
No, they just come in a small little park, I do tons of abatements, they come on trucks.
So how?
You better, you better remember that, you need parking for the trucks for your abatement.
How does, I quote, essentially base, I mean, what ground is based off from, this is a design?
What ground is based on from?
You mean this one?
Yes.
So it's based on the location, which is level, within a certain degree, um they're still not responsible for utilities, we are. Uh so they, they are saying, you give us an area, and we can put this, that unit on that area, they don't really care where you put it, they'll put it any way you want.
So the hookups are your responsibility?
So you're, you're responsible for all the hookups. So you have to make sure there's adequate water and and uh electric and and sewer, the hookup.
Sewer.
Just letting you know, I I've just been waiting for two seconds, just in case you can't be hooked up.
Okay, no, 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 so wait, thank you, thank you for the notification.
Can I want to ask you something?
Sure, sure, so B A, that's what you could say about your, your your uh work about what our options are, go to the depot there, but then?
So the two suggestions were at Depot Place, which is right before shop break on the uh east side of the railroad tracks, or the park come out by Bellevue, I think Bellevue is a little tighter. Less, more constricted as far as uh access in and out, um so I, my recommendation would be to Depot Place, but that's up to you guys to make that decision. And then we could start getting the borough engineer involved as far as utilities and everything else that we needed then.
How can we, uh how could we can't do uh trailers on the parking lot over here?
I don't think this parking lot would be adequate as far as parking, and if you just put the trailers based on this schematic here, I'm not really a professional in it. I think you, because of the topo and and and. And I would think if if you're cutting into the ground for sewers and stuff like that.
We're not cutting into the ground, why would you, let's not go too crazy on on a. We're not cutting into the ground, why would you, let's not go too crazy on, on a new, new shoreline for a temporary location, right?
I'm saying, that, that's what I'm saying, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go into the ground at some point.
Well, let's talk about that later, when our mold remidiator goes, who knows, mold remidiator, what? You could use a bathroom, or something else. Right now, we checked out the report, I recommend you guys read this report, it's, there's severe areas that have to be addressed accordingly. But some places could be addressed as soon as possible, we get a new roof. New roof is the first key, and everything else is kinda like, you know, it's not constant, it's not constant damage, that freezes, so, let's get the mold remidiator, okay? And, um, um, concerning, concerning the trailers, worst kitchen, you know, like, we all decided to use trailers, but, you know, there's other options, we wanna get this on fast. So just do us a favor, you brought this up, um, and see if you could, the trailers will, you know, it should be okay over here, options are, if, if by any chance, if we could even use to, you know what? So that's what you have to say about the report, correct?
Uh, what report?
I asked you directly, it was on two locations to put the trailers.
Those are two locations.
Good, and we have to find, uh, port of pally, or create a new, uh, what you call it, um, drain, a sewer system.
Temporary sewer connection.
Temporary sewer connection or not, okay, if you don't mind, the council members, uh, the city manager, just come up and give us your solid little report about it. No, your trailers, yeah, yes, go ahead. Um, I'm gonna ask Jimmy.
Jimmy, do you have another copy?
I got a couple. You get open?
Uh, I gotta get this back to you.
No, worry about it.
Let's, uh, tough, uh, what have you been focusing on, on your hands on, what you've been working so far?
Well, the first and foremost is the, uh, fire safety inspection violations.
Go ahead with that.
And, um, and we, I put forward to the governing body, uh, the, the three electricians, okay? And, and the scope of work, uh, out of the forty.
Please, please, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Peral has a family medical emergency, uh, Matthew Much, Council, uh, Council, would you note that? Thank you, she's leaving now, please continue.
Yes, um, so, the, 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 out of the forty-two violation, about twenty-five of them are actually immediately addressable. Uh, they were, uh, extension cord violations, and, uh, uh, aggress lighting, and et cetera. Right, that's something that actually, as soon as we hire an electrician to do, it can be done. Uh, the red flag, or the cautionary flag was raised, because our building is so old, that, you know, before any construction and any kind of, uh, uh, work gets done on the second floor or anywhere else, that we should take a look at the, the, uh, presence of the asbestos. So I was given a three hundred page report, uh, by McCabe, um, Environment, which was, uh, done, reported to us in Maine. And they kinda like reiterate the Irish environmental report that was done in February. And they located all the asbestos, uh, points in the building, and both report sort of match. So we had two professionals look at this, and where the asbestos are, there were ten places, where, uh, basically, it's the hot pipe, the jackets, and they're done in the police department. Uh, the basement, they're also in the building department basement, they're also in the fire department basement, okay? And the, the second floor, um, where the pipes are, above the ceiling tiles, um, there are a few places where they identify asbestos, it's all been marked. And, um, and those are the ones not to be disturbed, is their recommendation, we totally agree with, right? They also stated that there's other presence of asbestos in the building throughout, okay? And that is the floor tiles, because the building was built prior to nineteen sixty-two, most of the floor tiles that was built in the United States during that time contain asbestos. So, uh, they have a, a dormant solidified asbestos form within all the floors. Uh, beneath this floor, we have that tile floor, okay? Uh, the recommendation, uh, from, uh, uh, from these reports plus others, is that what we're doing here, carpeting over them is the best protection for it. Uh, because, um, unless it is, uh, uh, sanded, unless it's gutted, unless it's been, um, reduced to its powder form, the, the way it is in the tile is it. So, um, the concern was that we would be drilling through an asbestos, uh, 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 area, when we're actually installing the extension, uh, uh, extension cords.
You mean the floors?
Yeah, so, so actually, the floors will have nothing to do with it, uh, our, our actually walls are made out of, uh, bricks. And, uh, and, and what we're looking to do is just simply, um, you know, pass the fire safety violation, all right? The, the way we can get around with too many extension cord in an office is to provide wall outlets.
That's it.
And that's a parallel, um, circuit, and there's no additional amperage required, because we're not increasing any machines. Uh, the three electricians that got, gave me the rates, said that, yeah, we can do the circuit, uh, parallel circuit, and it, and it put like three, four, uh, you know, extra circuit boxes. That should re, uh, release us from all.
Twenty-six violations, you say?
I think the extension cord was like, at least like sixteen or something.
Simple fixed road.
Right, and mostly they are in the second floor, uh, uh, downstairs, already have, like, the clerk room, have a wall of, of sockets. Which is actually what I'm gonna try to install up there as well, right? Um, so, it's not, most of the work that needs to be done is in the second floor, there's some rooms in the police department.
With our electricals though, right?
Right, so, the, so to, so as far as, uh, I, I can tell, after having read three hundred pages, um, is that, that the, the work that's been proposed to do, to avoid the fire safety violation, all right? Which are installing, uh, wall outlets, and also, uh.
You're talking about electrical.
Yeah, the light regress, um, uh, I'm pretty confident to state that we will not be disturbing any existing asbestos here to do that. Now, of course, whoever is hired should be familiar with the McCabe report, so that.
You're talking about the electrician directive file?
Exactly, right.
Electrical violations.
So now, I got three bids, and, uh, and we have one electrician who's always been with us, um, that has been here before my time. My recommendation is that we should get somebody who actually knows the building, all right? And then we familiarize him with the McCabe report, we assign him to strictly adding this, and we should be able to get rid of half of the safety viol- uh, violation.
Did you give us a recommendation, I recall, I think you did, what was your recommendation?
Well, it was, uh, Trico Electric, right? Um, he's a, he's been a fire, uh, inspector, so he's very familiar with the requirements, and, uh.
What is the cost of this project, directive five, twenty-six of our electrical violations?
The, the, the cost is, is just calculated, um, but the way the visit came in, is gonna run between eight to twelve thousand dollars.
Not bad.
To, uh, get rid of, you know, to make sure all the rooms that, that was cited will be, uh, will, will not be citable after we're done. All right, and so, that is, uh, I think that is an action that we can take immediately, it'll show good faith in our effort to address the fire safety, uh, issues that we, we know we have. And, uh, and that's something we can do immediately, if I get the budget and the, uh, and the approval for, to go ahead. Now, I actually, uh, last thing I wanna do is stir up asbestos here, so I gave it a very thorough look, so, uh, I have a report that's been prepared, and, uh, if anybody wants to ask questions, they're more than welcome.
To our, the Irish report, I'd like to see, that's a little bit, please go ahead.
What you're saying is, we'll talk about in here, you're saying to put a floor over this floor?
No, 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 what I'm saying is that, the, the, the most, 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 most buildings were built, you know, nineteen sixties and before.